Item number three. Appointments: Task Force on Improving Human Services. Recommendation is that the City Council appoint the eight recommended individuals who have agreed to serve on the task force for improving human services. I need a motion. I have a motion, and I have a second. I also have some cards from the audience. Would you want to speak first?
I just have a question.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam President. And I think this may be go to Dr. Cox, I'm not sure. How was the task force selected? How were these people identified? And who chose this slate of people? That's my question.
Uh huh. Dr. Cox?
The resolution that was passed by council had timeframes in it in terms of this group had to be appointed by council within 30 days of the amended resolution being adopted. So, the first time that this came up, remember there were two resolutions. There was the original resolution, and then there was an amended resolution. The original resolution, when it was passed, the city clerk sent out nomination information to council, sent out the information to the media that people were being asked to express their interest. We found that that was, that didn't work very well. We only had one person who expressed an interest on the website. There's a tradition, you know that there's a process for city boards and the like where people apply online, and then you make nominations, and then you vote on those nominations. It became evident to me that that process wasn't very practical for a task force that had to be formed and appointed in such a short period of time, because a lot of people weren't aware of it. It's not like an ongoing planning board where you know about it, and you've read about it, and it's existed for a long time. So what I did is I talked to people in the service provider community who asked, I asked them for recommendations. I talked with some council members who offered ideas of recommendations, and I talked with the individual people that, I got a lot of help from Andrea Krieger at the United Way in terms of who would be the people in the community, because there were specific types of people that we looked for in the resolution. And so, I kind of reached out to people. There were some people who also reached out to us, reached, got in touch with me, and said that they were interested.
Madam President. Thank you, Dr. Cox. And it's just, we've gone away from our normal process. And I realize we have had times when nobody has applied. Nobody's filled out the paperwork for an application of interest. Were the people that we are going to vote on tonight, have they filled out some type of documentation for us, like the application of interest or anything?
The people that you're voting on have not.
Okay.
But I've spoken to all of them. I know that at least one of them is here tonight. I haven't been turning around in my chair to see if any of the others are here tonight, but they have all indicated that they were, they were willing to do that. I had that conversation with all of them, and I sent them the items that are on tonight's agenda. I sent them a copy of the memo when it was completed.
Thank you.
Dr. Cox, I do have a question. Were all council members sent an email requesting them to nominate someone?
Yes, not by me. As I stated earlier, when the original resolution passed, the city clerk serves that function with taking care of nomination process, and so she sent out the email to all council members with information about the nomination process and a deadline.
And how many council members responded?
There were no responses.
Thank you. Councilmember Myers?
Yes, now you said that there was an amended resolution.
Yes, ma'am.
Correct. Okay. Now, after the amended resolution, did you, did anybody send out any requests for nominations?
No, because given the previous experience, and given the fact that there was a tight time constraint, it seemed to me that the council, in my experience since I've been here, and even since the form of government has changed, I don't believe councils ever had a task force before. So, I didn't feel that we were compelled to follow the processes for committees and boards, et cetera, because it's not, this is not an ongoing function. This is a, the task force has to complete its work within a certain period of time. I just thought it was the best process that I could, I could execute on behalf of the council.
Okay, well, my personal view is that I think that that process probably should have been discussed by the elected body, not the prerogative of someone the voters have not elected. I think it was the council's responsibility. I actually had been talking to some people who were interested in serving. But, anyway, that's all I have to say. I'd like to hear from some of the people who are speaking before I finish.
Uh huh, Dr. Cox. Okay, Dr. Cox had talked to me about it. When the first request went out, and no council members had sent in their nominations. This is not untypical of the council in reference to nominations for important boards. We went back and also looked at the timeframe that the task force was given, going out, in that, what was more important. Let's make sure that we have the task force done, and the task force can do its work. So this was not something that was just done arbitrarily. It was something that was thought out, talked about how we could, you know, make sure that we stick to the commitment, where people won't see that we were not doing what we were told to do by the ordinance, and be conscientious of the sensitivity of the issue. So this was not something that was just done by Dr. Cox, and she did not talk to me about it. We have sat down on numerous occasions, going over it, and talking about the many issues, not only the fact that the council itself did not send nominations when we requested, but also some of the individuals that were on boards were also on other boards that created sunshine violations. If they became a board member on this particular board, you would have sunshine violations. So how do we protect those individuals from that? So this was not something that was just done on her own, but conversations that we had so that we can get the best possible group to take care of this. Dr. Pratt?
Thank you, Madam President. I will say that, you know, I understand Councilwoman Myers' concerns about, you know, the council's involvement, but I think it almost goes back to the timeframe that we needed, because I know there are many of our boards and commissions have, we need a person who lives in this block, and this block, and who owns a business here. And nominating for those is often a real challenge, and this one has very specific needs. And so it almost is a valuable thing to get, you know, for the startup of something like this, to go with a holistic look as opposed to individuals. Now, I, you know, I, I think this is a great slate. There are probably others who could have been nominated, but I think because of the time constraints, we need to just accept this and make a point as the council to not put that type of a time constraint and do a bit more searching, because filling these, this many slots is, this fast is tough. So, I'm going to support this. I think it's, it's a great group of people. I know many of them, and have a lot of respect for them, and I look forward to what they'll recommend.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Bayer?
Thank you, Madam President. So, in actuality, we're victims of our own process, because the timeframe is what caused us to rush through this. And you know, the issue to me is that, I don't have a problem with the slate. There's a lot of people on here I know, and some of them I know very well. It's that we have very little information on them. You know, at least with the application, I would have preferred that we did some type of intake form on them, or any board that we have. I mean, for everyone else, whether they get appointed or not, they have to fill out something in advance, and I just think that's the right thing to do. And what we have is just a few tidbits on each person. And I would have rather had it be done that way. I will support this slate that we have here. I just, I have problems with the way we did the process. And it's unfortunate that we had such a short timeframe, but I just think we made a few errors here, but I'm willing to go along with it tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Myers?
I'll hold my comments until after the public speaks.
Councilmember Wingate?
There's a lot going on in the area of homelessness. I was down in Tallahassee, and the state legislature is passing a bill concerning homelessness in order to provide funding to help with the homeless problem throughout the state. I think this is a good effort for us to get our task force started, and start working through the issue here for the city of Pensacola. I'll be supporting this.
Thank you. Dr. Cox, do we have one of the members here?
Yes. Randy Wilkinson is here.
Okay. Mr. Wilkinson, as always with boards, we always ask the person who's been nominated if they have any comments. Do you have any comments?
And John Johnson's also here, I'm sorry.
And Mr. Johnson. Okay. Mr. Wilkinson, and then Mr. Johnson. Mr. Wilkinson, do you have any?
He's indicating that he doesn't have any comments.
Mr. Johnson? Okay, thank you. I have three, well, two cards. One is from Mr. Nathan Monk.
Madam President, members of the council, I know that some of you have already said that you are going to support this, but I'm going to beseech you to potentially change your minds. I did a public records request on this issue, of everyone who filled out an application or made an inquiry to be on the task force. First off, I know for a fact that Brian Spencer did invite someone to fill out an application for the task force, and so the information that you got, that no one on the city council invited someone, is inaccurate. Also, an application was filled out by a gentleman by the name of Chase Sale, who is a member of the Realtor community. His application was received, but he's not on this list, and there's no explanation as to why. Dr. Frank Sansoni, who has a PhD, is a heavily active member in the homeless community, a wonderful advocate, and was a professor at the University of West Florida, expressed interest here at the city council, and wrote, Dr. Cox, asking if he could be placed on the task force, and offered to send in an extensive amount of information, explaining who he was and his resource. And she said that that was not necessary, but that a resume would be nice, and no further communication was given. So I don't understand why these two individuals are not on this task force, considering that they are the only people who made an effort to be on the task force. And so when we had two individuals, if you read Chase Sale's explanation of why he wanted to get involved, he said he was concerned about the homeless community here, that he volunteers at Manna, and he seemed to have a very compassionate and concerned reason to be on the task force, and said that he wanted to see something that would be fiscally responsible, and do something good for our community. Why wasn't he chosen? And why were people sought out when we had people that were interested in the community to be on the task force? I understand that you have 30 days. I don't know where we are on this process, but this smells nasty to me, and I don't think it's right. Frank Sansoni should be on this board, and I think that Chase Sale should be on this board, and it's nothing against the people who are on it. Many of them I know, others I don't know, but this, this just goes against the whole process that I've seen happen so far, and I don't like it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Michael Kimbrel?
Good evening, council. Michael Kimbrel, 801 East DeSoto. I actually am going to concur with everything that Mr. Nathan Monk just said. I also think that this stinks, and I find it very telling that Madam President found time to sit down and talk with Mrs. Cox about all of this, but did not inform the rest of the council about any of these conversations, or, you know, the decisions that they had made. I also, actually, I'm just going to leave it there. I think, I think that does it. Y'all really need to work on this. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I cannot contact the city council members individually. That would be a sunshine law. I can't do it.
No, she cannot.
I can't do it.
Can you do an email to let people know? I did public records request if y'all could email each other also.
Uh huh, thank you. Thank you, thank you, but I cannot do that. Councilmember Myers, you had your, light on, is it, this is your?
I said I was going to, my comment was, I was going to hold my comment until after public input.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other speakers?
No, ma'am.
Oh, okay. I think that Nathan Monk articulated very well my concerns, and why I will not support this task, this task force. I'd like to ask Dr. Cox about Dr. Frank Sansoni. He is a person who has been in the trenches, a great advocate for the poor and the homeless in this community for many, many years. So I would like to ask you if he contacted you, and?
Yes, ma'am. He sent me an email. He offered to send his curriculum vitae, coming from an academic background. I did not need to know every publication that he had ever written, so I said a resume would be fine. I've never seen, I didn't, you know, a couple of you up there understand the difference between the two. I sent him a reply, I believe it was March the 13th. I have the record of the email. As a matter of fact, it was a special email in that it, what didn't come out in the email search that was conducted by the public records coordinator. So I looked through my own email, found it, printed it, made it a PDF file, and provided it to the public records coordinator to be distributed to Mr. Monk as part of his public records request. So I did reply to Dr. Sansoni, and said, please send, you know, curriculum vitae is not necessary, please send me a resume. I never heard anything more from him. In the interim, I had a, another retired PhD from UWF, recommended to me by one of the people who was Phyllis Gonzalez, who works with the Department of Family and Children's Services. That gentleman contacted me, expressed his interest, sent me some, talked with me several times on the phone, and I sent him some information, and he gave me a short little bio. He was also, as I said, we wanted to keep the size of the task force reasonable. He had many of the same things in, in his background that the other retired PhD from UWF had, but he got back in touch with me, and he also was a resident of the city of Pensacola. So, the other person that Mr. Monk mentioned is a woman by the name of Chase Sally. She neither lives nor works in the city of Pensacola. She did attend the public forum that Dr. Marvett spoke at. She did talk with me, I talked with her, and as things went along, and I had other people in the business community that had expressed an interest, I asked her if she would understand that, given that these other people were both city residents, and that's often of tremendous importance to other council members, this is a city task force, that she was very understanding. And I said, if there's anything I can do, she certainly, everybody is welcome, these will be public meetings, they're welcome to participate, they're welcome to, to, to come to the meetings. And I said, if there's anything I can do with, to help get you integrated into doing some other volunteer work related to the homeless, I'd be happy to do that, because I'm getting quite an indoctrination into what goes on here.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your explanation.
The other person that was mentioned, that Councilman Spencer did not submit a nomination, he sent me an email. I met with that, I talked with that person numerous times, and she had a conflict as far as her job was concerned, in that their funding source prohibits her from being involved with things that she thought might be misconstrued with this task force.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your explanation. Okay, so I get the point. We were in a hurry, so the president of the council and Dr. Cox basically decided, it appears to me, who would be on here. The council did not get to vote on who would be on here, and it was not brought to us for discussion. Actually, we could have extended the deadline. We do have that, that power, if we needed to, in order to get applications from people, and have more detailed information, and to know who all was, was interested. But I will not be supporting the task force. I didn't, I don't feel comfortable with it. So, even though I'm told, well, people will have the opportunity to participate, the problem I have with a task force that deals with homeless, homelessness, and we all know that that really is supposedly the purpose of this task force, even though it's called human resources, have a problem with task forces that exist to do something for and about the people who are not on those task forces. That's one of the major problems I have with this task force. So, I won't be supporting it. I have not been told how the homeless will, will participate in this task force, or how people who've been in the trenches on a daily basis, working with the homeless, will be involved in participating with this task force. So I don't see how the outcome, and I trust that it will be. I mean, there's some, and I appreciate everyone who's offered to serve on this task force, and the problem is not with the individuals who are on this task force, it's with the process and the exclusion of some people, I think, who should be on this task force. Task force was not designed to have certain individuals on this task force, so I will not be supporting it.
Thank you, Dr. Wu.
I would just like to put forth an idea, and see what reaction I get from my colleagues. Evidently, the biggest objection is there were one or two people that had an interest in being on this committee that did not make it. Is there a strong objection among the council to adding the two people, and then taking action on what we have tonight? And I'd just like to throw it out, and see what the reaction is. Thank you.
I need for you to do it by a minute, Dr. Pratt, because, because what happens is, it was specifically in, we're going to have Dr. Cox, what did the?
You are not, this, this is, this recommendation is based on a resolution. So, my understanding, and I spoke with the city attorney about this this morning, you would have to amend the resolution. So that's not the action before you hear. The action before you hear is to approve what the resolution called for, so in order to add anybody additional to, help me out here, city attorney, this, you have the power to pass a resolution, which is what you did, which created this task force and set forth who would be on it. It said no less than seven, no more than nine, and it specified where those people would come from. So it is my opinion, even though I am not an attorney, that you would have to amend the resolution versus just adding to this tonight as an amended motion.
Mr. Messer?
Madam President, I'm not, I'm not sure exactly what the question is.
The question?
We have a resolution that sets forth a specific number of people that are on this task force, as I understand it. And Dr. Cox and I spoke about that sort of in a vacuum. In other words, I didn't realize that, that there were apparently qualified, desirable people out there that might want to be added. But I mean, the bottom line is, it, we don't have to make this so complicated. I mean, it's, it's the city council's task force. The resolution is just that, an expression of your legislative intent, and if you want to amend it or add people to it, I think that's, you know, in your discretion. I mean, it's your task force, so you ought to be able to, that, that doesn't detract from what Dr. Cox said. We did have the conversation, and I just didn't realize the full parameters of what we're getting into.
In that case, I would like to make a motion that we add the two names that have been brought before us tonight as alternate members, and should the committee members ever decrease in size, that these two people would be the first two people that would be placed on a permanent basis on the committee. And I make that in form of a motion.
Okay, now I have?
And this does not change the resolution. We're still at the same number. All I'm doing is adding the two as alternates, so they're able to then, as they would have anyway, be able to attend the meetings, and if there's ever an opening, then they would be able then to move in to fill that number. I'm a little perplexed. I know we make our own rules. I thought we were the lawmaking body, and now we're being told that, you know, you know, but then again, perhaps the dilemma is that we did set the number on what we wanted. And if that's the case, then I understand the law, comply with the law, would like to add the two people as alternate members. If I get a second, we'll be fine. If not, then we'll move on to something else. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, I did not get a second.
Would you say?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr.?
You do have a second.
Spencer, you are going to second?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
That was a voluntary.
My son.
You're going to second. So now, we need a discussion out, before we, Dr. Wu, you had your light already on, did you cut off your light? You're done? Okay. So now we have Dr. Pratt.
Thank you, Madam President. One of my concerns, as we grow that body, a lot of times when we have citizens on many different committees, it does become an interesting sunshine challenge for, you know, them to, what are their parameters? And, and a lot of times, I think we don't have clear legal assistance for our boards and commissions. And one of my questions, you know, I appreciate the intent, I was just wondering, if these people are named as alternates, are they then bound under the sunshine and not allowed to approach the members of the committee until, you know, even though they're not even on it? I was just wondering if we could get clarification on the legal structure of that.
Mr. Messer?
You know, I think our working hypothesis should be that they are covered by the sunshine law.
So, so my understanding then is they would, they would, I guess I would be concerned making them alternates, where they would lose the ability to talk to the committee offline, but yet not really be on the committee. I think that would be an awkward challenge. I mean, we struggle with the sunshine, and we get briefings, and we, we're, this is sort of our job. I mean, not that, I don't think we have any sunshine violations, but it's definitely something at the forefront. I think, I just, that's my concern. I appreciate the idea of trying to incorporate more voices, and I hope that this committee will make a point of having lots of public input, but I guess I'm going to not support the amendment, simply because I think that it, it puts these people in a really awkward position. Thanks.
Councilmember Bayer?
Thank you, Madam President. I agree with Councilwoman Pratt. I mean, this gives them all the restrictions with none of the power. They're not members of the task force. Right now, you know, we've got eight on our slate here, and we've got Mr. Monk out there, who's the ninth one, and our cap's set at nine. If we're going to add alternates, we're going to violate a resolution, we might as well go ahead and add two more people, and violate it even worse. I'm not going to support this, because I just don't think it's the right thing to do for these two individuals. I think the process has not gone well, but I don't think this is the right way to address it.
Thank you. Seeing the other lights, please vote. You're voting on the amendment to add the two alternates. The motion fails five-two. Now we're back at the main motion. Uh huh. Please vote.
Hold on, just a second.
Hold on, please.
One moment.
Please vote. Uh huh, the motion failed four to three. Item number three. Item number four. Now, item number four, on here, since I am the sponsor of this particular item, and due to the failure of approving this task force, I am going to pull item number four. City Attorney Communications, Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Madam President. I always take- I always take a deep breath before I jump off the deep end on these communications and sort of dovetail on what Council President said. Clearly, there are some issues between the executive branch and the legislative branch. And as you look at at least three instances that have occurred here tonight, I think they're classic examples of the disharmony that takes us really back to day one. And so, since part of my duties are to advise you, I think I just feel compelled to say my best advice is to echo the words of Council President. The executive and the legislative branches need to start talking to one another, coordinating, and working together. Because if this government is going to devolve into sort of a government by the city attorney, then either side may end up getting some results they don't appreciate. The government here is a very complex and delicate blend of a charter, state statutes, ordinances, resolutions, and policies. And what you're asking the city attorney's office to do, and the city attorney's office is quite capable of doing it, but I want you to understand that what we have here in the city of Pensacola is a very highly politicized atmosphere. You're asking the city attorney to make high-level policy decisions. And then, when those decisions are made in that highly politicized atmosphere, we turn around and find out that we don't really have a very articulate, sophisticated media to explain those answers to the public. So, in summation, I would just say I echo Council President's good counsel that both sides need to find an opportunity and a way to work together so that we can get the business of the city of Pensacola transacted without a lot of interference by the attorneys. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Also, upon the communication, I need to go back to the task force. At the makeup of the task force, and you want the process to be done differently, please notify Dr. Cox so that we can bring this issue back to us in reference to the task force at the next agenda conference, so that we can get about the business of doing what the task force needs to do. So, if you have concerns and process how it should be done, or should it be done in the standard manner in which we do the rest of our boards and nomination appointments, we need to take care of that so that we can bring that back. Councilmember Spencer.
Thank you, Madam President. And this is task force-related. All right. And pardon me, I just may need to ask some questions directed to you and/or the administrator. I'm curious about how we can expedite this process to get this task force assembled and operating. I've heard from members of the community that were excited about, and proud, I should say, proud that this council and this city government recognize the need to address homelessness in a more proactive way. For those of you that attended the presentation, we were told you've got to provide resources. You've got to provide solutions as a city government. And that message was so loud and clear. And I strongly feel that the formulation of this task force is vitally important in order to accomplish this. So, I'm wondering if... I'm worried about getting mired in the discussion about how to nominate, how to vet. I'm worried about how long this could take. And I'm reminded that even... And pardon me for using an analogy that may seem sort of trite, but, you know, the formation of the bracket for March Madness. You heard, "Oh, wait, it wasn't done right. We don't like what bracket so-and-so team is in. This is bad." And I don't want to see us get caught up in, "What is the composition? It's not perfect," and spend too much time doing that. So, I'm wondering if on the losing side, of which I am a voting member on the losing side, if I can reintroduce the vote... How quickly I can reintroduce the vote? That's on the prevailing side.
On the prevailing side, too.
So, it would be one of the...
The issue here is, since we've had a conversation, if this council is interested in revoting on this issue tonight, most of the people who filled out, you know, the cards or something to vote on are gone. Okay? They've left.
We had two people, though.
Yeah.
We've got one.
Yeah, we have one person here. And so, they think that this issue is gone and that we're going to come back. I would like to see us bring this back on the next agenda conference after it's thawed out. Everyone has made their comments about it. And if you like the composition, or your answer is to resubmit, then we will all know about it and get into the debate tonight about whether or not we should reintroduce this. But if we bring it back on the next agenda conference from your input, because that was important to you, okay, then I think that that would be best. Now, Dr. Pratt, Councilmember Myers, and Dr. Wu want to make comments. Is that okay, Councilmember Spencer?
Absolutely. Although I would like to ask Mr. Monk if he would like to speak.
Okay. Not at this point. I have a card for him to speak at the board forum, okay? So, we're just trying to get some clarity, some directions. We're not voting on it. And so, Dr. Pratt.
Thank you, Madam President. My question is sort of related, and I just... It was... It occurred to me with our new policies. I don't think we've had it happen. You know, tonight, it failed, but two members were absent. And I wasn't sure how our policies are for those absent members, whether they can... And whether it's on this item or any other item, whether they can then ask that it be put back on the agenda. I understand we've totally tightened up making motions at meetings. And so, I just didn't know how... What are our policies set on that? I don't know if we can answer that tonight, but it would be nice to get a little refresher on how that process works, whether it's the prevailing side or those absent, if they want to bring an item up for reconsideration at a future meeting.
And we'll have Dr. Cox send that information out. Yes, Ms. Castile.
I've had a couple of items come to me over the months that I've been here, asking about reconsideration. And your... The Roberts rules are a little bit different than the policies that you have for council. So, let me just read the section 1.14 on reconsideration. A member on the prevailing side may move to reconsider a question at the same meeting. The motion must pass with the same formality as required to pass the main motion. And if passed, reopen to the main motion to debate. Now, there's some other things that maybe City Attorney Messer might be able to help us with. We have some questions.
And I guess my question was more, there have been times when a council member is absent, and they clearly can't bring it up during the meeting. And I just... I didn't know if we had addressed that, or... And we can address it later, but I just wanted to put that out. Thanks.
Councilmember Myers.
Yes. Two things. If a council member is absent, they're neither on the prevailing side or the non-pervailing side. They're not on any side, okay? Secondly, I would like to see a process that we follow, the same process we do for our boards, commissions, and authorities, so that every council member can have some input on who is on this board, on this task force, and we can vote. Because there's obviously one person that I think was highly qualified to be on this task force and was not selected because I think had the council been able to maybe vote, that person may have ended up on the task force. So, that's what I would like to see. And so, I'm giving my input to Dr. Cox now.
Dr. Wu.
To me, it seems like what would make sense is, at the next meeting, if someone from the prevailing side brought the issue back. There is one person I know of that was very strongly in favor of the task force, sitting to my side here. The proposal failed four to whatever. And so, with that person present, there is no question in my mind that the motion would carry. The only thing is, what the city administrator said is the same evening. That's the only... Stick a wicket, I see, because to me, do we, as a body... And again, I hate to do this to you, Mr. Attorney. As a council president, so aptly said, people who spoke on the issue, some have left already, and so they're not here to state whatever they feel. Do we have the liberty of going to next week and then hopefully having somebody on the prevailing side bring it up at that time?
Dr. Cox.
May I address the council, please?
Yes.
We had this issue come up before when Councilmember Myers, who had voted on... Was not on the prevailing side in the amendments, the ordinances related to camping and public use of restrooms, et cetera, brought up amending that ordinance. I consulted with the attorney, Doug Sale, who helped us with our rules and procedures, about whether that could be. As you know, he helped us with these rules and procedures. He's a well-respected attorney and was once the state city attorney of the year. He helped us with these. And reconsideration is, just as Ms. Castile just read it. So, that doesn't apply here. What you're asking about is at the next meeting. He... I'm going to tell you what he told me as best as I remember. Each session of this body closes and ends, and you are not bound by anything done by the previous session of your meeting. So, if somebody wants to bring the same item back up again, there is nothing in our current rules that precludes them from doing that. Now, he advised me that he could perhaps do some legal research to see if there was some way we could keep that from happening. Because obviously, that kind of flies in the opposite direction of a collegial body that, once you make a decision, you all abide by that decision. It kind of means that if there's one or two people who don't like what council does, they can keep bringing it back up and bringing it back up and bringing it back up until they either wear you all down or you change your vote. So, my understanding of what he said, and I'd be more than happy, we do have some funds left in our carryover for rules and procedures to consult with him about an answer to that. But it's my basic understanding that someone could bring this forward again.
Thank you. Mr. Messer, you were originally asked, do you have anything to add?
I don't have anything to add, Council President.
Okay. So, there are different ideas of how to bring this back and everything. So, I would hope that everyone sends their opinion, ideas to Dr. Cox, and so that we can come up and bring you a decision or some options when we come back to the next council agenda conference. Yes.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
I hate to do the lollipop thing again, Mr. Attorney. What I heard Ms. Castile say was that the item had to be brought up at that meeting. And what I'm saying is, I don't want... This is two important issues, as Councilmember Spencer has stated, to let that window close and then not be opened. So, my concern is, is that correct? We have to either take action tonight, or do we have the option of taking action later? Because we don't, then I'm prepared, at the risk of getting in trouble, of being on the prevailing side, of moving to reconsider the issue.
Council President, Councilwoman Wu. I think you can do it two ways. You can do it the easy way or the hard way. Now, let's look at the hard way. We have a council policy that is in conflict with Roberts rules in the subject of reconsideration. On the other hand, we have a council policy that says, "Well, jeepers, if you don't follow Roberts rules, don't worry about it because it doesn't invalidate everything that you've done." So, you know, it's like trying to sort out fruit salad here. So, the hard way, if you want to take the risk, would be to move to reconsider at this session and then table it and bring it up at the next session. Do you see what I'm saying?
I do, indeed. That helps very much.
Here's the easy way. And this sort of goes back to what I was trying to convey in Attorney Counsel Communications. This is an incredibly important issue. And you can take a purely legalistic view and go the hard way. Or you can take what I think is just sort of the common sense, practical view of government, and go ahead and address the issue at the next session. Now, if you're concerned about a legal opinion, I will tell you in advance that because of the seriousness and pressing nature of this issue that I think any right-thinking person should be involved in, I will render a legal opinion now and stand behind it that someone can... Whatever side they're on can bring this issue back at the next council meeting so we don't spend all night arguing the fine points of Roberts rules and policies. I think this issue transcends the form. We have to deal with the substance of what we're trying to accomplish here, which is a good thing for the city of Pensacola.
Right. Thank you very much, Mr. Attorney. My members.
Okay, one more thing.
Okay. Then I would like to make a motion, as a member on the prevailing side, that we reconsider the item. And number two, I would like to move that we table the discussion until next week, given the hour of need. So, what we have done is open up for certain the fact that we will revisit this issue next meeting.
I do not have... I have a motion. We've got to clear.
Okay.
Everybody clear their lights. There you go. And I have a motion by Dr. Wu. Dr. Wu. Okay. We do not have a second.
We're trying to second it. Just verbally second.
Second.
All right. So, we have a motion and a second. All right. Do we have any discussion on council?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. And this time, I seconded the motion, so I could have discussion and would like, Madam President, to invite... We now have a motion and a second.
And I was going to do that.
Okay. And you know what? You do your job.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Spencer. I see no other council members wanting to speak. Madam Clerk.
Regarding the motion, the motion is to reconsider the item and to table... You said until next week. Are you going to have a special meeting?
Absolutely not.
I meant to say until the next agenda conference.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Now, Councilmember Baer.
Yeah, let's see.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam President. I will not be supporting this. The attorney just told us that we don't have to do this, that we can bring it back up. Anyone can bring it back up next time. Our council policies and procedures say, and what Mr. Sale has interpreted, is that each session is individual. I think there are some members of the council that want a different process to do this. And I would like to be able to give input into the executive myself and bring this back up, maybe in a different format at the next meeting. So, I won't be supporting it.
Councilmember Myers.
Well, it needs to come back up at the next agenda conference. And so it's going to come up one way or another. So I see no reason not to support Dr. Wu's motion. And in the meantime, we can communicate with Dr. Cox on how we think the process could be improved between now and the next agenda conference. Because I'm not going to support the task force as it is, as the process has been. I'd like to have some input into who is on that task force.
Councilmember Baer?
I have a procedure question, Madam President. The motion was to table, which means to put it on the table, it has to be taken off the table, but it seems like a motion to postpone would be more appropriate, because we're postponing it to a future time. And so I'm just getting clarification on that. We're laying it on the table where it has to be affirmatively taken off the table at some point in the future.
Postponed.
Postponed would be a better... Postponed would be a better...
I would like to offer a friendly amendment to change that to postpone, and then I would be more favorable.
And I accept a friendly.
Okay. Thank you. Now, Councilmember Spencer, do you want to speak again?
Sure. Thank you. Here's one of my concerns, is that we have... I don't want to postpone this. We have members of the task force that have been notified, and I am concerned that we are sending mixed signals to them about their validity, about their stated commitment. And so, Madam President, I hope you will invite a member of the public who obviously wants to speak. I'm anxious to hear from the public, since we have a motion and a second.
Right. And we have one person, yes, Ms. Castile?
Yeah. I wanted to just sort of give a bigger picture, 50,000-foot view, and I'll be very short, I promise, Madam President. Today was the appropriations meeting where the state heard a bill, the number I can't recall at this moment, 947 I think it is, to appropriate significant funding from the Housing Trust Fund to specifically address homeless. We got our lobbyist on it, Marcy Whitaker, and a statewide team of people have been addressing that with each of their legislators to get support for that. It's very significant funding levels. Any more dragging out of this process will endanger us in not having a finalized product by which we could go to the state and say, "Please give us this money so that we can fund a facility that we all know that we need." We can fund what there is out there, a continuum of care plan that I think will be the major discussion of the task force as it's created. So I would urge that you get the task force up and running as quickly as possible and to move forward and get a solution. The process that goes forward with task forces, of which I have run many in my career, is inclusive in bringing members of the public and involving them in that. You can have an 18-member task force, or you can have a seven-member task force. What's more important is that you provide and include public participation in that group. And so that's all I have to offer.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Monk, he's the only person that has asked to speak.
Okay. So I kind of feel responsible for creating this problem, and so I would like to give a little bit more clarification on where I was heading in that discussion that I wish I had given before, but hindsight is what it is. I had hoped that in expressing my concern about this process and the two individuals that were left out, that we could have created some way to incorporate them into this process, because I can at least speak for Frank Sansone, that he is more than well-qualified. My goal was not to get us stuck in a rut that could end up ultimately taking weeks, months, however long it's going to take. I don't think that that's productive. This task force should have been put together in 2011, ahead of these ordinances to begin with. And so I feel like stalling this process any longer is not going to be good. I'm willing and ready to work with the people who are on the task force recommended list. It was not an insult to the individuals that are on that list. It was a frustration with the process and trying to share with you some information that I had, that I felt wasn't necessarily accurately presented during the presentation to you tonight. So I don't know what I can do to beseech this council to move forward tonight, or if there's a way to get those people on the task force and move forward. I don't know how to do it, but I don't feel moving this into any further is productive, because the reality is, as much as we like our processes, as much as I have a dream team that I would love to see on here, et cetera, there are people starving, there's kids sleeping in cars, we might find someone who froze to death during this winter. So I have a lot of opinions, and I love sharing them with you, but I don't want my opinions to stifle the process of us actually creating action and moving forward on these issues. And so, in my opinion, you know what? You could have the worst composition of this thing possible, and I'd rather work with those people and us change each other's minds and move forward than us getting stuck in this thing any longer than we have to, because it's already been too long. People are starving, people are hungry, people are sleeping in their cars. Let's get to work. Thank you.
You're here.
Madam President?
We have Councilmember Myers and Dr. Wu, and I hope that we'll be able to move forward from this discussion. Councilmember Myers?
I just told the city administrator that I wish that she had spoken up sooner and shared the information she just shared with us. The outcome of the vote may have been different. I wanted to address Nathan Monk, if I may. I would really like to see the two individuals who asked and showed an interest to be on this task force. And I do think we need to move forward with it, in light of the comments the city administrator has made tonight regarding possible funding. So I'm prepared to, if we can add those two individuals on to this task force, I'm prepared to go forward with it tonight. I'm not sure how to do that, though.
We would have to amend the resolution which to do that. Yes.
Could... I'm sorry, Councilman Wu.
Councilman, uh-huh.
What I would like to do, and I don't know how to do it, I think I do, what I'd like to do is the following sequence of events. I would like to withdraw my original motion. I am hopeful that whoever seconded my motion will withdraw it or second, at which time I, on the prevailing side, will make a motion that we vote immediately on the issue before us. So if I, I will start off by withdrawing my original motion. Thank you very much.
And so, Dr. Wu, that means...
Hopefully, the person second will withdraw their second.
Okay. Yeah, that's a motion to reconsider, and so we're going back to reconsider item number three, the appointment of the task force on improving human services.
And I second it verbally, because our buttons are not working.
Okay. So I have a motion by Dr. Wu to reconsider the appointment task force on improving human services. I have a second by Councilmember Spencer. So do I have any discussion, Councilmember Myers?
Yes, I'd like to amend, offer an amendment to the motion. Oh, that's right. Okay.
We have to vote to reconsider.
Okay.
Okay. So we need to vote to reconsider. So, Madam Clerk, you ready?
It'll have to be a verbal vote, please.
Okay, verbal vote. All in favor? Okay, motion carries, seven, zero. Now, go back into, we're reconsidering item number three.
Yes, can I speak?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make an amendment to the motion that we add to the task force, the two citizens who have submitted their interest in serving on the task force, and that, if, Dr. Frank... Nathan Monk, can you come up here and give us those two names?
I believe it was Chase, the last name is S.A.A.L.E., and then Frank Sansone.
Yes.
Second.
Our motion is second. Ms. Myers, you still had your light on. Was that what you wanted to do, or you wanted to speak?
No, I just wanted to make an amendment to the motion, that those two individuals be added, those two positions be added to the task force.
Okay, now we have to vote on that amendment. So did you want to speak to the amendment? Dr. Pratt?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm trying to think of a clean way of how we can do this, because I know there's concern that we have to change the resolution. And I was just going to suggest that an alternative to doing this as amendment tonight is to put this, put whatever legal changes we need to make to the task force for the resolution, et cetera, on the next agenda and appoint them then. That would also address, I know Councilwoman Baer was concerned we didn't have much information about the people who were currently talking about, but it would also, you know, give us that opportunity to have some information about these individuals. I just think that might be a cleaner way to do it, to approve this tonight and then make a change next meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Spencer?
I think that fellow Councilmember Pratt has constructed an orderly, clean way to achieve what I hear some council members, especially Councilmember Myers, what her goal is. It seems to achieve what Nathan Monk has appealed to us to do, and that is to reconsider it and to get this task force set tonight. So I support what Councilwoman Pratt is saying, which means I think the motion and second to reconsider, as originally submitted, should move forward, and that's what I'll be supporting.
So to, let's make sure that what we are voting on, we are voting on to reconsider item number three, but bring it back at the next agenda conference.
No, no. It's to vote tonight.
Councilwoman Myers is amending it to include these two people, and so I think we're to vote on the amendment to include these two people. That would be our first vote.
Okay.
Well, can I make myself perfectly clear?
You're clear.
Is that I don't, I think that that amendment, as proposed by Councilwoman Myers, is unnecessary. Is that we were, as I understood it, there would be a subsequent agenda item at our next agenda conference that would address changing the resolution. And therefore, that needed to precede the discussion and voting on two additional members. So, and if that's not how you meant it, Councilmember Pratt, I thought that's what you were stating.
That was my implication, was rather than mix too many things tonight, it was, "Let's vote on this, get that clean." And I know Councilwoman Myers said she didn't really want to support this without knowing, and I think, though, the general consensus that I'm hearing is people do support it, we just want to do it the right way. And that's why I don't want to support the amendment tonight, but I will support doing it the right way next time.
Okay.
If that makes any sense.
Okay, Councilmember Baer?
Thank you, Madam President. And Councilwoman Pratt, I mean, you know, you're relying on someone offering that for the next meeting. And I don't know if you're going to do it, or you'll just be favorable to it, but those of us that want those two additional people added are going out on a limb here, saying that, yeah, somebody will do it. I mean, one of us could do it, and then hope that it happens. I don't think it's right to put them through a different standard and have them do the online application, we didn't make these other people do it. I think we've got a problem there. You know, I seriously doubt that we've really researched our resolutions to see if we're always in compliance with the past resolutions. Easy with ordinances, you can see if you have, but I'm not sure if we even have a system to go back and check our resolutions. I think that, you know, as the attorney said earlier, we can pretty much do what we want. And I support the amendment. I support adding these two people, and I think we would have a good compromise if we do that tonight.
Okay. Councilmember Myers, I have not spoken, those two people are fine, but remember, there was also another person as well. So when we started adding people, that's why I wanted it to go back to our next agenda conference, so that we can look at everyone who initially wanted to be on the task force. There's another person missing as well.
She's saying no.
So, to go back, so...
I believe the third person was Mr. Monk, that he was the one that had originally applied.
No, the third person was a female.
The third person was Leslie Powell, and she backed out and said she didn't want to do it.
Work conflict.
Okay. Okay. Any other, Councilmember Myers, last time?
Yes. Okay, I'm willing to compromise a little bit more. I can support the amendment.
Your amendment?
No, no, the motion, not my amendment. But I'm not going to give up my amendment without, you know, asking the, making sure that there is a what, that somebody's going to bring up amending the resolution at the next agenda conference. Now, it seems to me we have our council executive who could easily amend this resolution and either have me or one of us bring it up in the form of a memorandum at the next agenda conference.
I don't see a problem with coming back as a resolution, with finding somebody to do it. It will, it can come back as a resolution, amending the resolution.
Okay.
Hi, Edward, go ahead.
Okay. Well, I'm willing to do that, but I would like some assistance from Dr. Cox to do this.
She looks ready.
Well, if she's not willing to do it, I'll do it myself. I always do my ordinances and resolutions myself, but it has to come back up before the council agenda conference. But I will work with Dr. Cox on the wording of an amended resolution.
Dr. Pratt, and then Councilmember...
Yeah, I'm withdrawing the motion. That's the amendment.
I'll draw my second.
Okay, so what's, and so we're back?
I'm fine.
You're fine?
We're going to do it her way.
Call the question. I need to be clear on what we're voting on. We have...
We're voting on item three or whatever.
Item number three, the task force. Okay. That's my understanding. I just want to, I just want to make sure that after I cleared up everything, that we are back to item number three, the appointment of the task force, to vote. So please...
We need a motion and a second.
We need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Okay. And we got a motion and a second. So please vote on item number three.
Verbal vote, please.
Raise your hand if you're in support.
Thank you.
Okay, it passes. Okay, it passes 7-0. Okay?